Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2017.
Roll call.
Can I have a roll call, Mr. Mumm?
Shirley, Ms. Bogaszewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kins?
Here.
Ms. Wasson? Mr. Trillo?
Here.
And Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, and I'm supposed to do the sunshine law statement first, I think, right? In accordance with the state's sunshine law of New Jersey adequateness of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was approved on August 17th, 2017, in the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. We're going to go straight into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that the public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as per written in Section 7P of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to discuss are a harassment, intimidation, and bullying hearing, legal matters, a settlement agreement, and the superintendent's contract. Actually, we'll probably discuss the superintendent's contract after, but maybe before. The matter discussed in executive session will be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All right, can I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we'll be back. We plan to be back at 7:30. All right, thank you. We're, um, we were in executive session, we're back out in public. And we'll start with a, um, roll call, Mr. Mumm.
Shirley, Ms. Bogaszewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Trillo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to begin tonight with our new, um, with our new, uh, agenda order of going right to approval of minutes first, so, um, we'll start with the minutes from the executive session of July 17th, 2017. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Obsteem.
Jen, Lorraine?
Got it.
Dina?
Okay, and Dina? Motion passed.
Okay, uh, a motion, let's have a motion for the regular meeting of July 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Obsteem.
So we got the three same?
Three same.
Motion passes.
If you have any, um, I'm not asking for comment, but if you do, just jump right in. These usually go by pretty quick. Let's go for the executive session for July 31st, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Obsteem.
That's me, too. And me.
Got it. Motion passes.
Okay, and...
Sorry, I was not here for the 17th.
All right.
Obsteem?
You don't, if you want to abstain, you could, you don't have to. And finally, for the, uh, regular public meeting from July 31st, 2017, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Got it.
And meals?
Got it.
Okay, all right. Passes?
Motion passed.
Okay, um, that was the minutes. We also had some correspondence as listed in your, on your, in your packets. Now let's move to the, um, oh, we have the, uh, today we have the Violence and Vandalism Report for Period Two. Uh, to turn over to Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, before we do the Violence and Vandalism Report, I am very happy and excited to introduce to the board and the community my recommendation for our new Supervisor of World Language and ESL, Mr. Roberto Lugo. Mr. Lugo is currently a Spanish teacher at Northern Burlington County, has also taught in Lindenwood. He brings to our district years of experience, not only as a world language teacher, but also as an informational technology instructor, too. He completed his undergraduate work at Dartmouth and his graduate work at Wilmington University. It is with, um, great excitement and pleasure that we recognize, um, Mr. Lugo tonight, and I ask for the board's consideration of moving item 10 dot 8, the appointment of Mr. Lugo to be our next Supervisor of World Language and ESL. Tonight, Mr. Lugo is joined by his wife and his three children, and, um, after we make the appointment, we'll take a brief recess of the board as an opportunity to, um, to meet Mr. Lugo and his family. So, uh, Mr. President, may we move item 10 dot 8 at this time?
Certainly. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Well, I guess we'll do that afterwards. Uh, let's have a roll call, Mr. Mumm.
Shirley, Ms. Bogaszewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yeah.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Let's take a five, five-minute recess since we're so late.
Five-minute recess. Thank you so much.
Next session? Thank you. Mr. President, the board, uh, this is our, uh, twice-a-year reporting on the district's Violence and Vandalism Report. We're going to be reporting on the second half of the 2016-2017 school year. We do this, uh, twice every year since the, um, uh, since the code required it. Tonight, we have Mr. Volpe, Director of HR in our district, um, HIB Coordinator, who's here tonight to walk us through the report. Mr. Volpe?
Thank you. As, uh, Dr. Schiff said, this is the reporting for, uh, January of 2017 through June of 2017. The first part of the report is about incidents of violence and vandalism, and as you can see over time, there's nothing of statistical significance as far as changes goes. It's, uh, held fairly steadily, uh, this six-month period. There were 31 unduplicated, um, incidents. Uh, if you scroll down a little bit on the page, you'll see the actions that were taken, uh, whether police notifications were taken, in-school and out-of-school suspensions, and also down there, it tells you what if there were offenders and victims, and what types of disciplinary actions were taken in Section E. Again, this has remained fairly consistent since we have had to report these issues out. Uh, Dr. Schiff, if you could scroll down to the next page. The other requirement besides reporting out the violence and vandalism is reporting out the instances and numbers of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, um, charges. I think if you scroll down a little bit more, yes, right there. So what we do is we look at each, uh, school within the district, see how many investigations took place, and how many affirmed HIB incidents. So all in all, there were 18 reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, bullying. Six were found to be confirmed. And just like we do with any other, uh, training that we do for students or for staffs, our goal during that time is to reduce these numbers, um, and have less harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases come through the schools. Finally, on the last page of the report, you'll be able to see trends over time. We have the last four six-month periods that these have come through, through the different schools. The more interesting parts are at the bottom of the table. Again, you can see it has remained fairly consistent, nothing statistically significant to change there. The first column, closest to the schools, is what is, uh, the current, uh, six-month period. And then if you scroll down to the confirmed HIB events, as I had stated, keep going down a little bit further. There were six for this, uh, six-month period, and if you compare that to other six-month period, that has held relatively the same. Again, we do this for every six-month period. We do this twice a year, so I will be back, uh, once school starts to report on this again at some other time, unless anybody, members of the board have any questions.
Okay. Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe.
Just a couple more items. First, recently, niche.com named Hillsborough Township Public Schools the 31st-best school district in the state of New Jersey. To arrive at these rankings, niche looked at data from the U.S. Department of Education, as well as test scores, college data, and rating collected from the niche users. The ranking is a testament to our, to the dedication and hard work of the entire Hillsborough community. Thank you to students, teachers, staff, administrators, and parents. That deserves a round of applause. And finally, as summer winds down and we're gearing up for the new school year, I wanted to thank our custodial and buildings and grounds staff, who are putting in long hours to prepare our schools, playgrounds, and fields, as well as the surrounding areas, for the return of our students and staff. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to make sure that our facilities are beautiful, well-maintained, and safe. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Schiff. Committees did meet, uh, in the past couple of weeks, so we're going to have a committee report. I'm going to look around, who's looking up? I guess Mrs. Haas is looking up, so she's the winner. Uh, we'll have Education Committee first.
Sorry, guys, but this is going to be long. The Education Committee met on August 15th, and we had a very, very good meeting. The bulk of our meeting was taken up with curricular matters, and, um, we reviewed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight books that are, um, well, uh, seven of them are for the high school in the English department, um, one is for science, and one is for K through six. Um, these were all very, very good books that the committee unanimously supported. We also reviewed no less than 65 different curricula. Most of them were in English because that was our subject of the year, but there were a number of science and social studies and world language curricula that we also reviewed.
They lost their mic.
You can't carry them.
Nope.
Take another one. There you go. All right, move over. Everybody's moved down one.
Okay. Let's do this again. Thank you. Okay, and, um, okay, so, um, basically what happens over the summer, and it was very nice because Dr. Antunes gave a brief overview of the curriculum process to everybody. And curriculum starts with the supervisor preparing an entire year before the curriculum writing is done. And then, um, teachers volunteer for summer curriculum writing, and those same teachers work on common assessment development. And there's various feedback. This year, I think something like 75 teachers were involved, um, in various different curricula, and really good work is done. And, um, after all of that work is done, and it's reviewed by the Assistant Superintendent and the Supervisor, uh, they go over bibliographies and webographies, and they look at cross-articulation, which means that everything should fit with other subjects, um, at the same grade level and from one grade to the next. And then the Board Education Committee gets to approve it, and then we bring it to you. So, that's what was done. There was a pile of 65 curricula that needed to be signed at the end of our meeting, which I did with pleasure, and I wanted to give particular credit to Sheila Cooper, who is our English Supervisor, who did an unbelievable task of leading this process along with our Dr. Antunes, um, over this summer. We also, at the request of, um, a parent at last week's, uh, at last month's, uh, meeting, discussed the student safety curriculum, um, where life skills and health and physical education officially addresses issues of student safety relative to sexual assault. And we found that beyond the everyday teachable moments that come up, um, from time to time, we started the earliest grades with life skills programs. In grade one, we do stranger, danger, safety, and in grade three, we have a babes program that covers six weeks of topics that include inappropriate touching. These topics are covered by trained facilitators. Then the, uh, phys ed and health curriculum has strands throughout all grades that address various types of abuse and characteristics of, uh, unsafe situations. And, um, it was noticed that, uh, it was noted that a lot of these situations generate private discussions at times, and discussions among, uh, not only the teachers, but the school nurses, school counselors, and teachers and parents. We also feel very good about the fact that we've just added three new additional guidance counselors at the elementary level. So where we used to have three, uh, guidance counselors covering six schools, we now have six covering six, and it gives us an opportunity to add a lot of proactive counseling items for the new counselors to work, um, uh, to work with. And our new, uh, Director of Guidance is looking at various programs and looking to rewrite the guidance curriculum based on this, uh, helpful opportunity that we now have. We also went over various policies that we have for, uh, that cover liability for pupil welfare, that specifically address a teacher being alone with a student. There were at least 10 policies that I found, um, that regard various things. And I just really want to be clear that we're not talking only about teachers here. A lot of the discussion, at least among the public, has, you know, focused on teachers. We're talking about all school employees. But we have a home instruction policy, for example, that requires people not to go into a house if the student is the only one present. We have the employment of staff members policies, which talk about criminal background checks. We have reporting responsibility, where various people are required to, um, report conduct unbecoming. We actually have a policy on corporal punishment that basically protects any pupil from bodily harm or for offensive bodily touching. We have various policies on liability for pupil welfare, uh, that require that no student ever be transported in a personal vehicle, or that no pupil be asked to do anything that would be detrimental to their health and well-being. We have a very clear policy about inappropriate staff conduct, which provides many examples of behavior that would not be tolerated, um, you know, from comments to physical activities. We have a policy on electronic communication that asks for people to be very careful about what they communicate, um, what communication goes on between adults and students. We have sexual harassment of teachers, sexual harassment of students policies. We have a standard of conduct policy. And we also have HIB policy statements, which basically talk about any conduct that disrupts a student's ability to learn in a safe and disciplined environment. And then we have, you know, reporting responsibility, which is basically the see something, say something policy, which, you know, um, is something that everybody in the district is, is frankly required to do. So, we are going to continue to look at our policies, and we're going to see if there's something that we can do, um, in relation to just setting out what the professional boundaries are for adult people in the school system as it relates to children. And we'll be meeting again on that, and hopefully at some point, you know, we'll bring in additional people to the process. We had, um, a couple of, uh, other policies, um, that are on the agenda tonight for first reading, on website accessibility, professional development, suspensions, expulsions, and, we're dealing with that. Next month, we're going to have our Supervisor of Nursing to our meeting, uh, to discuss a Narcan policy. And we had a couple of informational discussion items that were tabled to next month. We also discussed random drug testing, and we reviewed some statistics. We found that, uh, 120 students were tested last year, and nine were confirmed positive. Our target goal for this year will be 200, and hopefully they will be done relatively evenly across the year. So that was the end of that. Our meeting took place at 3:30, um, because during the day, um, there were 100 teachers, and our supervisors and principals all participated in a grading symposium, which was a really exciting day for me. It's like the first time I've gone to anything like this. And it was really nice to see the teachers, you know, coming in on a day during the summer, along with the supervisors and our fearless leader, Dr. Antunes, um, to discuss and express their concerns about our grading policies, our homework policies, various things that, um, are being reviewed in terms of the educational world. And, uh, it's a whole conceptual review of the purpose of grades and the purpose of homework, with an eye towards assuring that they are consistent, accurate, meaningful, and supportive of learning. And one of the goals is to assure that every child reaches the standards that are set forth by New Jersey Department of Education, uh, whether some get there quicker and some get there slower. We're no longer talking about a bell curve that goes this way, we're talking about a bell curve that keeps going up. And, uh, I find that very exciting. And it, we talked about the need to avoid toxic practices that disincentivize children and hurt their motivation, or actually misrepresent what their true ability is. So that was a very exciting day. That was like 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock, and then we met for the Education Committee. So I take my hat off to my Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum for a very long day, but a very valuable day, and I thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Haas. Go to, uh, Mrs. Bogaszewski for, uh, HR Committee?
Sure. So the HR Committee met on Tuesday morning, and, um, we discussed some staffing, uh, updates. We increased the enrollment at Woods Road School and Triangle, uh, the need for additional PE time at the elementary school. Uh, we discussed, uh, staffing updates. Their Human Resource Committee unanimously recommends to the full board the changes of the Woods Road School and one section at the Triangle School due to increased enrollments. Uh, change a part-time elementary health and PE teacher to a full-time health and PE teacher due to the increase in elementary sections. Uh, Mr. Volpe and Dr. Schiff shared, um, that there are questions at the last board meeting regarding the possibility of doing criminal history background checks annually on all employees, and after this, Dr. Schiff will, um, share with the board and public processes pertaining to the background checks and other hires. There were minor language changes, um, reviewing nine policies and regulations requiring, requiring board approval, and then personal, uh, matters that were discussed. And then, um, prior to the start of the meeting, um, we acknowledged Mr. Lugo's new position for the new Supervisor Candidate for World Languages and ESL.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just fill in a little bit of the details on the process that we go through for criminal background, uh, history checks. We did have, um, comments from the public, and, and some of our parents are here tonight, that asked whether or not the board should do, um, annual criminal background history checks. And I think it's important for the board, as well as the public, to be aware that we receive on a weekly basis information from the Somerset County Department of Education on any public school employee who has been arrested for a disqualifying condition. This is for everyone in the entire county. So every superintendent gets a list of everyone in the county. It identifies whether or not they're working at a bus company, or whether they're working in the district. And then, um, if it, if it's someone who is identified as a Hillsborough employee, we also receive another notification from the Office of Criminal Background History directly from them. So we receive timely information of anyone who is arrested for a disqualifying condition very, very quickly, at least on a weekly basis, and if it is one of our employees, we get direct notification. So when we discussed this at the committee level, the question was, should we, should we also do annual criminal background history checks and require that, um, from all of our employees on a yearly basis? And the recommendation from the committee is no, that it is unnecessary due to the fact that we receive timely notifications and updates on any school employee that has, that has been arrested for a disqualifying condition.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll ask questions in a minute. Let's go to, um, Mr. Kins for operations. He's going to do operations today.
Uh, Operations Committee met on August 10th. The first item was with regard to the air conditioning bids, was reported, and it was in the, the meeting that we had on the 31st, that, um, the bids came in, uh, much over, um, budget that was expected. A significant portion for that has been attributed to the timing, which was, uh, expected to be done during the, the summer, summertime. So the recommendation, um, recommended to the full board is that the, uh, window air conditioning units for ARIS and HMSB rebid, um, so that can, uh, be done during the lower-cost seasons of the end of calendar, 2017, so the fall, winter, or early spring of 2018. Uh, and they will configure the bids, um, for, uh, each school separately, and also both schools together, um, so that may be an opportunity for, um, with a consolidated bid to, to have an overall lower price. Uh, we got an update, um, with regard to the summer work, um, so that was work done in the buildings, including lead water remediation, carbon monoxide regulations, um, Hillsborough High School kitchen fire suppression systems, and preventative maintenance programs in all the schools. For the lead water remediation, the total cost to the board was $5,700 and, and change. All plumbing was done by in-house plumbers, uh, so that saved the district approximately $19,000, um, so that was, um, a, a great use of our, uh, internal resources. And my understanding from what the meetings was is that all water sources, um, that were tested, that had to be remediated or remediated and are in service.
Well, no, we have, we have an update that literally we just got today.
Okay.
And, um, today's update indic, now, what we did was we remediated all, um, all faucets and bubblers, which are, are the water fountains, that tested initially high. We also had, um, kind of at the end of the, the spring, we tested all of the, um, all of the science labs at the high school and at the middle school as well. We're currently getting back that information about, um, anything that has been remediated but still is testing high, and any of those, um, any of those faucets, uh, that, that have tested high, even after remediation, we're going to have to go back and, um, and fix or determine whether or not we have to, uh, look at another option. But at, at this point, literally, we just got the preliminary results, um, today. Our, uh, Wilson Quintero, who's our Buildings and Grounds Director, still has to go through it with the professional and make a determination. So, once we have all of that information, I'm going to ask that we have a, um, an operations committee meeting before the start of the school year, so that we can move expeditiously if, if other things need to be remediated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Uh, we're still waiting to find out how much of what I referred earlier will be reimbursed by the state. Uh, we received an update on facilities, um, and equipment from, um, the ESIP, and, it was recommended that, um, Aramark, uh, who manages, um, is the professional management company, uh, completes the facilities assessment to create priorities for long-term investments in our buildings and to fix structural problems, um, and we, uh, group, uh, affirmed that recommendation. That will allow us to, to get a full understanding, a comprehensive, uh, assessment of all of our equipment, um, all of our facilities, um, and understand what state, um, they're at, um, so that, that way, that'll, uh, feed into our long-term, um, maintenance plan, and then also for preventative maintenance, uh, to supplement those activities. Uh, we received an update on non-public transportation, um, and I don't think I have anything to record at this time, it was just an, an update. We also received, uh, we also discussed about, um, leasing two buses to reduce, um, costs for, um, field trip and athletic, um, court, uh, routes, um, which is in the actual agenda, because one of the, one of the leases there, uh, and it saved, uh, considerable, um, savings to the district. We had an update on a legal matter, uh, and an update on extraordinary aid, and then we tabled a number of items, um, for the next office meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kins. Um, any, uh, comments or questions from the board on committee reports? I just had, uh, one comment I wanted to make about the, since the air conditioning was so important, uh, to our, to our staff especially, of course, our students, but also our staff. So, uh, Mr. Kins, you can, I'm directing towards, towards you, but I'm going to like, of course, give you the answer in my question, as I usually do. So, we, we didn't specifically budget for any amount of money to do the air conditioning project, but we had funds available in our, um, capital reserve account. And we had an estimate for air conditioning for ARIS, and the bids came in at... And the bids came in at 50% more than the estimate.
Yep.
Right? So we still would have enough funds to complete the project at that price point, but that wouldn't be really an efficient use of funds at all. It was just way too expensive. So am I correct? So I want to just make sure I understand it and make it clear for the public. So we're going to try to turn something that was disappointing, severe disappointment to me and to the board, into something good. Rebid it again, maybe put some options in the bid for doing one school, both schools, meaning ARIS and the middle school together, some different bid options, right, in there, and try to maybe get some savings in that. Just out of that, we'd be able to get two schools maybe and do it at a time when we think that bids will be lower because it'll be a different part of the calendar year when bids normally would be lower.
Yep.
Okay, that's the essence of it. Okay. I just want to make sure everybody got that. Dana?
I just don't want this to fall at the wayside.
It's definitely not.
You know, I mean, is there any chance that this could happen in the springtime?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is that like, you know, some kind of goal or, you know, I want this to be on a high priority.
Well, the idea was that we would be able to do ARIS. The original idea was we'd be able to do ARIS, have it ready for this September, make another deposit into the capital reserve, maybe be able to get the middle school by the spring. Now, maybe we'll be able to get both by the spring. We'll have to see how bids go, but maybe we'll be able to get both of them done by the spring.
Thank you.
Ms. Haley.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I was disappointed at the way things went. And I personally am just disappointed in our architectural firm because this wasn't something that we dropped the bomb on. This was something that they did. And I hope that we're going to continue to explore other options.
I appreciate that. You're not alone in that sentiment, for sure. Anyone else for any questions, comments on committee reports? Okay, we're going to go to public. This is a public comment for the Action Agenda, I'm sorry, the Action Agenda or New Business. Please come up to the microphone a couple times tonight when public gets to speak. Just give your name, address, or affiliation, whatever you'd like, and we may address your questions and answer them if we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Laurel Drive, as well as Hillsborough Education Association. I had a question, actually clarification, if you could, on items 11-5 and 11-6. They are the four-year and five-year leases for, quote, instructional technology that's called the project. In total, I'm seeing that that's about 1.1 million over the five years. Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Mahmood, Mrs. Zalinski, maybe you can talk a little bit about the lease.
Yeah, just give it a second.
Board had some questions about, clarifications about this themselves just today.
So perhaps I'll be redundant in that. I apologize in advance.
No, 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 you're not being redundant at all. This is perfect because we also were, they should have some info on that because we asked them for it today.
Okay.
So just give a second to pull it up, right?
Yep.
While they're looking for them, maybe.
Do you have something else while they?
Sure. Aside from the specifics of the actual lease, I'd like information on what the, quote, "project" is and what we're considering instructional technology, being that we're a very tech-heavy district. An expenditure of 1.1 million plus over five years raises a few eyebrows, so I would just like to know, please.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Mahmood.
Okay, so, hi, Henry. The four-year lease is solely for Chromebooks. Based on the information that we received to date for technology, so we're looking at 1,205 Chromebooks. And the total dollar amount on that one actually is how much? 444,000. The second five-year lease includes approximately 102,000 in infrastructure updates for information technology. That, all this, by the way, Henry, was built into the 1718 budget. This was all board-approved. Now what we did is we went out for the financing of these items.
Sure.
So that is about 444, 440, that was, I said, 102,000 in infrastructure upgrades. There was another 445,000 for B&amp;G equipment and another 129,000 in transportation. Those are for two transportation vehicles. And once again, those are the five-year leases. It include three components: the infrastructure updates, the Buildings and Grounds equipment, and then 129 for the transportation, the two buses.
Okay. And the Chromebooks that are being replaced, are those new ones or those to substitute ones that are currently in use?
It's additional for the younger grades and perhaps some repair.
You can answer it. You can answer this because this sort of overlaps into technology.
Those Chromebooks are a combination: new ones because we're going into the younger grades, and then some break, fix, repair stuff.
Okay. And the price that was quoted, the 440,000 plus, does that include the etching that we would typically see, or is that a separate line item for that as well?
I don't know.
We can find that out.
We can find out.
Okay, could I have that number by the next board meeting, please?
Yeah, before.
Thank you.
That's easy, right? It's up to get that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John Donadio, 82-Purine Pike in Hillsborough. I have a question and then a concern that I'd like to address with the school board. The first is the question concerning whether or not the Board of Education or the district has taken a look at the Hillsborough athletic contract. I was here several weeks ago, perhaps a couple of months ago, and there was talk about forming some type of subcommittee to analyze, change, revise the school district's athletic contract.
Do you want to answer? I mean, I can answer. Sure. Well, I know that no committees that I've sat on have discussed it this summer, but I don't know what, if any other district personnel have taken a look at it. Maybe I'll throw that to Dr. Schiff.
No, we've actually had some conversation about the athletic contract. At this point, there may be some pending litigation on it, so we haven't moved forward with any changes until that's disposed of.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. With respect to my concern, I have, and I know in the grand scheme of all the good things that the district does, this may not seem, you know, significant to the board, but for me and a number of other parents in the wrestling program, it is important. For me in particular, I spent nearly two decades in Hillsborough running the recreation program, serving as the president of the Booster Club, a capacity which I still serve as. I have a passion for the sport. It's not only for my kids that I did it, but for the, you know, 70 or 80 kids in the program that I worked with. And again, just volunteered countless hours and time into this program. During that time, I can tell you that there were an equal amount of coaches and assistant coaches at both the high school and the middle school level that were terminated, reshuffled, reassigned, resigned, which has really led to, I think, the demise of the wrestling program. I understand that the district is in the process or may have approved the hiring of a coach to address the vacancy. Don't know that for sure, but that's some of the talk that we're hearing in town. I think that that's perhaps a temporary fix because to me, you know, the real issue is the system in which the coaches are hired. And this is something that I tried to work with within this system for the 15 or so years that I've been involved in the program, to no avail. And now we're at a point where, you know, we regularly had 70, 80 kids enrolled in the recreation program. And again, these are small numbers in the grand scheme of the district. But we have middle school program with seven or eight wrestlers. We have a high school program with 12, 13, 14 wrestlers, you know, this year. And it's just, it's disheartening to see because these are concerns that, again, I shared with, within the confines of the administration, that we don't have the right individuals there. Some folks were there collecting a paycheck. Some folks were there, had no experience, you know, coaching wrestling. And it's just unfortunate because the district does such great things, but it seems to be really missing the boat with athletics. And I can speak for wrestling, but I know that there are some challenges in some of the other sports within the district as well. So I really encourage this Board of Education to take a hard look at the hiring practices and policies of the athletic coaches in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donadio. Thank you. Anyone else from the public for?
Action Agenda or New Business?
Hi.
I'm just going to readjust this a little bit. My name's Dwayne Yanez, Piney Woods Drive, here in Hillsborough. First and foremost, I want to thank you all and Dr. Schiff. I know I reached out to you individually after the, or collectively, at the end of the July 31st meeting. And Dr. Schiff's response was, you know, we would be able to address this topic at this meeting, which is why I'm here. But first and foremost, I want to thank you all for actually addressing it, responding, Dr. Schiff. And I want to just make clear that I truly respect and admire the teachers and staff members in our school district. My goal at the July 31st meeting and at this meeting is not to point any fingers or identify the things that I think are going wrong or insinuate that teachers in our district can't or shouldn't be trusted. I want to make sure that that message is very clear because that's not what I'm here to do. What they do every single day is amazing, and I know how hard they work, how much effort they put in. I have a daughter who started at HES last year, and I've seen how dedicated all those teachers are, so I truly appreciate it. However, what I brought up at the last meeting was, in light of this investigation going on into the former teacher at Wood Fern and the former principal at this school, it really is, I think, in the best interest of everybody, staff, students, parents, and even just the community members, to really take a look at the policies we have in place, specifically the ones relating to the staff and student interactions. And I know you brought that up in the comments you just made. Also, there was a case at the Hillsborough High School in 2007 where it resulted in a conviction of a teacher with having relations with a student at the high school. So I look at it as these unfortunate events are here, right? Whether they're true or not, I know the investigation is not something that we're going to discuss, and I'm totally okay with that, but it's hit our community, it's here, and I think it's in our best interest to address it. At the last meeting I was here, I was looking and I proposed a revised policy, looking specifically at the interaction between adults and children behind closed doors. And I just want to reiterate the fact, I don't think there's anything wrong with a teacher or a staff member being alone with a student, but behind closed doors, I think, poses some issues, right? The ongoing investigation, which, again, we're not looking to discuss specifics, but the allegations allude to abuse having occurred behind closed doors. Had those closed doors never been closed, this may or may not have ever happened, or at least we would know there's a very strict and direct policy addressing that. I know for a fact it would be an adjustment for nurses, counselors, for disciplinary meetings, tutoring, extra help, but I also know it can be done because there's other places that have the policy of there's no adult ever alone with a child behind closed doors. Again, I bring this up because I think it's for the best interest to protect both staff and students. So to that note, on July 31st, when I was here, you all very much pointed me to the policies that are online. I noticed that Policy 3281, which I think you addressed, inappropriate staff conduct policy, was adopted in 2010 and revised in May 2013. Policy 3159, which is the teaching staff member district reporting responsibilities, which you addressed, Dr. Schiff, was adopted in 2009 and revised in 2016. So that leads me to believe something or whatever led to the adoption and revisions of these policies can allow for revision of policies that exist even today. There's two policies that I saw that have not been revised recently. So Policy 3280, which is the liability for pupil welfare, was adopted in 1995 and has not been revised since 1990. And specifically, it does not address an adult being alone with a child. I have it in front of me, and it addresses teachers or staff members are not to be alone in the car with a child, send them on personal errands, but it doesn't address the aloneness. And I think, given what has already hit our community, allegations or not, I would have hoped it would have been reviewed at least after the incident at the high school. The same thing goes with Policy Number 3441, the standard of conduct. Again, the only version that I see, and I'm assuming it's from its creation, is from April 28th of 2003, which I think also allows for opportunities to address or just add more specific language that addresses this directly. The second thing that I proposed was some kind of training or awareness campaign, which I think I shared with the board as well in that email that I sent after the last meeting, focusing specifically on the topic of appropriate boundaries and sexual abuse and sexual assault. So I know you brought that up in your recent comments that you looked at in the education I sent you all, as well, at the board, some information about some off-the-shelf, ready-to-go programs that are accredited, they've been certified, they do this kind of training in schools. And I think this is something that can be rolled out quickly. I know there's approvals and things that need to take place, but it can certainly be done. One of the resources that I sent was the Darkness to Light Organization, which focuses on preventing child abuse by bringing awareness to the schools. And more importantly, I think it's important for students to hear that message because even though there's policies for the adult staff members to review and sign off on, this language needs to be communicated to students, right? We're asked, as parents, to reinforce the learning that happens in the classroom at home. So this can only serve, as a parent, I feel responsible for educating my children on what appropriate boundaries are and how to keep themselves safe. But if they hear it from a teacher or a staff member in their school that they admire and respect, it only reinforces what we, as parents, are teaching them. And a lot of the times, children are not going to report any kind of abuse because, you know, they admire the people they work with. I mean, my daughter comes home, her teacher, kindergarten teacher could do no wrong. I could have taught her the same thing, it didn't matter. She was the perfect one. And I think it's as it should be, but there's an opportunity there for, I guess, the home and school team to help each other out. This issue of child abuse has obviously been brought up into our district now, it's in our community, and I think it's important to raise awareness for it. We've received some negative media about it and just, you know, the reporting on this particular individual, but I also think it would be amazing and awesome as a Board of Education, as a district, and as a community to get ahead of it and say, well, here are the things that we've put in place to ensure we don't have to deal with this again, and we don't find ourselves in this position regardless of the outcome of that investigation. Here's what we're doing to ensure that our children are safe. So that was just honestly the statement I wanted to read to you, but I did have some questions that followed up to some of the comments that you made. So you said that these policies will be reviewed to see what language or anything. Are you looking at those two particular policies that I brought up? And two, are we looking to add the specific language that an adult is not to be alone with a child behind closed doors?
We can probably tag-team this too, but please.
Okay. I mean, first of all, you know, it has to be said that all of our policies must be based on law. So, you know, there has to be some sort of legal review. And when you raise the issue of policies that haven't been updated for X number of years, generally, we get policy revisions from a policy company which takes any changes of the law and updates our policies. Does that preclude us from going above and beyond that? Sometimes it doesn't, but sometimes it does because, and I hate to speak for the law, but I have been advised that sometimes when you require of people to do more than the law requires them to do, and then you get sued, the policy may not stand up. Is that fair, basically? And looking at the policies, you're correct. A lot of them get close to what you're requiring or requesting, but not quite get there. And we have to look at what the consequences would be of any absolute policy in that regard. And I have done some research, you know, in addition to the committee work of last month, we plan to continue to discuss this. And I did find a number of policies that relate to professional boundaries. And it's described in terms of how we could keep students from being at risk as well as our employees from being at risk. Because as many opportunities that you bring up where teachers are accused of things, there have actually been opportunities where students have approached or attacked teachers or other school staff. So we want appropriate protection on both sides. And in terms of maintaining professional boundaries, you know, these kinds of policies talk about professional boundaries, they talk about the duty of care, they talk about lowering risk. And then they provide general guidelines, you know, which are basically couched in terms of avoid, use verbal directions instead of physical directions, avoid being with a student in a one-to-one, out-of-sight situation, never touch a student in such a situation. a student in a one-to-one, out-of-sight situation, never touch a student in such a situation, do not presume that a hug or touch is welcome. There are various other things, though, where, you know, it's left to the person to sense whether or not a student is uncomfortable with a certain situation. Thinking about the youngest of our children who might welcome a hug, as opposed to those who do not want to be touched. There are various situations where physical contact by a staff member is required to assist the student, such as first aid. You would never want to, you know, eliminate that possibility, or help somebody who has fallen, or to help somebody who's disabled use a bathroom, or to possibly demonstrate sport, music, dance, if there is no student that would be able to identify that. And there are various questions that they ask teachers to ask themselves, or, you know, any professional. Are you dealing with a particular student differently than you deal with other students? Are you saying things that, you know, I would not say if a colleague was present? Are you dressing differently? Are you bringing your personal feelings or your personal information into a situation with a student? And then there are different categories of boundaries. One is communication, one is self-disclosure, one is physical contact, one is place, one is targeting individual students. And it goes on. I mean, this is a six or seven-page policy. But we have to continue to discuss this, and we have to consult with our students and our teachers and our administrators. And it may take a while, but I think, you know, I, well, I guess I shouldn't speak for the board, but I think, I think if you think that there's anybody here who is not interested in protecting children with all of our heart and soul, you don't know us.
I believe it. I do. I do, and that's why I began my statement saying that. There's no pointing fingers from my end, there is no accusatory words, and if it comes across that way, that's certainly not the way it's intended. But I, as I said at the last meeting, I have, you know, a professional background in human resources, I understand what goes into writing policies, implementing them, researching, and all of that. But, and I think what you're talking about, those guidelines that are there, those are usually a guideline, right? And they're set standards to advise you on what you can and probably can't do, or should do, depending on your particular situation. What I was requesting in terms of the prohibiting an adult to be alone with a child is because I think Hillsborough, as a district, finds itself in a particular position where now there's a history of a conviction, and now there's allegations of this in our, in our community. And that's why my specific request into, when I said at the last meeting, when I was touring preschools in town for my children, they all have this policy, that there is no adult ever alone with a child. The Somerset County YMCA's have the same policy. So, we're finding ourselves in a position that this has touched our community. Whether we choose to view it in a certain way or not, it's here. Parents are talking about it, they're communicating about it. I've brought it to the board now for a second time. And what I'd like to know is, why, what is the opposition, or what would be the issue with adding that language to a policy?
May I just comment on that? I don't think there's any opposition. Let me just talk to you about process, about what our next steps are. For every committee report that's written, there are action items, which guide administrative work after the committee meeting. And the action item for here, relative to this issue, is that we will be reaching out to Strauss Esme, which is the company that does policymaking for us, as well as most of the districts in the state of New Jersey. These are attorneys that review not only the law, but also administrative code, regulation, and case law. So, Mrs. Haas is right on that a policy may not be updated because we didn't get a policy alert that the law, code, case law has changed on something like that. It does not preclude the board from moving ahead with its own policy on whatever, but the practice and the procedure has to be that we vet it through Strauss Esme. They will, they will review language, or actually write language for us, that they say is consistent with the law, and we usually bounce it to our board attorney as well. And then we go through a process, as we do with all new policies, where, by policy, by the way, we have to get feedback, and we want to get feedback, from all of those affected by that policy. And the board has to do two public readings of any policy before we're, before we can actually implement the policy. So, you will see on the board agenda tonight that there are policies either on for first or second reading. First reading is a public review, we take public comments, we may make changes, we can bring it back then for a second reading. So, I don't think there's opposition to certainly researching it, taking a look at it, seeing what is consistent with the law, and making sure that we go through a process that does what it intends to do.
Okay. So, my follow-up question that would be then, is here, as you all, the board members, looking into making edits to those policies, to add that language, or to suggest that language to the board of attorneys that would then go back and review it?
Well, yeah, but, or, we'll take a policy that's not a New Jersey policy and bring it to Strauss Esme, they then fully review it and vet it, they may make edits, changes, and then make a suggestion that this is what they would consider and recommend for it. And then we bring it back to our board, the board makes changes and additions, and then we come out with first reading and then second reading.
Okay. So, is that in your plans to do?
That is.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then as far as an awareness campaign, I heard you mentioning the Life Skills Program, which is great. I actually facilitated that for this last year, my daughter was in kindergarten. Is the proposed awareness, and I didn't catch everything that you had said about, I guess, the curriculum, but you did specify something to directly address sexual assault and appropriate boundaries and all that. Is that something we're only going to do through Life Skills, or has the Education Committee looked at how to incorporate that district-wide?
It's in every grade of our curriculum. And, you know, in addition to the formal curriculum, a lot of times in class, and I'm sure, you know, people with older children have had this happen, a subject will come up, or, you know, they'll hear something on the news, and it will become a teachable moment, which usually means more to them, because it relates to something that they, you know, are very curious about. And our staff takes advantage of every possible opportunity to get students when they're interested and ready to learn about this stuff. So, just because it's not on, you know, this week's, you know, lesson plan, when a student asks a question that's important and provocative, teachers go all-out to provide them with answers to their questions. So, there's no limit there.
Okay. And the Life Skills that you were talking about, would, will that be addressing the sexual education in this particular school year? Is that what I heard correctly?
It always has.
It always has.
In the appropriate grades.
Yeah.
Right. And so then what, and that's what I, I think that's the part that I missed. So, what grades does that start getting addressed?
As early as kindergarten, first grade.
It's first grade.
In first grade? Okay.
First grade is stranger danger.
Right. It's the stranger danger policy, and then in third grade, they have the Babes Program, which is more, you know, age-appropriate. I mean, every grade has age-appropriate messages that are part of the curriculum.
Okay.
So...
And let me just also say that we're also going to be redoing our guidance program, because now, as was mentioned before, we have three new guidance counselors that we added to the complement of elementary guidance counselors. So, we're going to be going through a full rewrite, Dr. Antunes, and as part of that rewrite, this has become part of that conversation as well. So, we're looking at it as an opportunity, that if we need to augment what we already have, that seems to be a very logical place to add that and enrich our curriculum that way.
If I may add something to that, last year, we went through a strategic planning process that involved teachers and members of the public, and many people were concerned about the edu, the guidance program in the elementary schools only having three guidance counselors for six schools. And the guidance counselors themselves informed us that they were basically putting out fires. Hopefully, by having this additional capacity, we'll be able to have more proactive programs in the area of guidance, and that will be, you know, their subjects will be determined by what is perceived to be the needs of the students. And I think that's a major plus-plus, so...
I agree. Having six, to cover six schools, is better than three. So, and again, apologies, because I'm new to the district from a school standpoint. The guidance program, when you talk about the guidance program, that is, the guidance counselors at the schools run their own curriculum with the students? Okay. And then my final question, which is, I think, more of a follow-up question, when you discussed the criminal background checks. I understand the logic of not running the annuals based on information that you receive from Somerset County, but then how would you catch a criminal national background check?
You know, it was the, and maybe our attorney, Mr. Lapira, can answer this question, but I understand that the code includes FBI, as well as the state police, as they run through any criminal background history check for the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, that's correct. And whenever the, whenever the background checks are done initially, it includes both the FBI database and the state database. And when the Criminal History Review Unit, which is a part of the state Department of Education, receives information about an offense that pops up in one of those two databases, they notify the district directly. There's also, I would also say, there's also a mandatory reporting responsibility for the staff member that's set forth in the policies that says, and also in the law, that requires them to report, frankly, any arrests, whether it's disqualifying or not, within 14 days of the event. And once they notify the superintendent of the arrest, they also have to notify the superintendent within seven days of the disposition of that arrest. So, there are procedures in place that the state has established to ensure that we receive timely notification of any potential issues with an individual who might be serving in our schools.
Okay. And then, so what you're saying is the FBI and the state, the FBI obviously would pick up the national criminal base?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Are we sure about that?
That's my understanding, we can verify that, but, yeah.
I think it would be important to verify, just because, again, my background, I, if I'm hiring someone and I'm running a background check, I have to select the national criminal database check to run it from. It doesn't automatically pick that up.
That's the FBI database.
It's the FBI.
What's that?
That's the FBI database, the national criminal database.
Okay. Thank you. That was it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public?
My name's Jessica, and I'm at 9:50, Robin Road, and I just wanted to add support to what she was saying, that I'm also a concerned parent. And just one note with regards to one of the guidelines or policies that you stated, stranger danger. I know you said you're looking to do a revamp, which I was glad to hear, because I, I think when you do the revamp specifically to stranger danger program, I think you'll notice that that's actually very outdated. The FBI themselves has actually stated how that is actually not a, not a national campaign. It's a national campaign, they actually regret spreading, because it actually, 93% of all sexual abuse cases actually occur by a, by somebody that the child knows. So, when I heard stranger danger, that actually just automatically put up a flag, but then you, so my, my direct question is, will that be one of the things that you're looking at revising as well? The specific stranger danger program?
You're speaking to, thank you, you're speaking to the Life Skills curriculum, that's in the Life Skills curriculum, that is currently not up for revision. Now, does that preclude us from looking at it? Absolutely not. We can absolutely look at it. The curriculum that Dr. Schiff was referring to is the school counseling curriculum, which will be, which will be new this current year.
Okay. So, so how do I go about request, how does that work then, if we want, if a parent wants to request that to be reviewed? How's that, what's the process?
It's noted, we're good.
Oh, that's it? Okay. I asked, and this is wonderful. All right, that was my, that was really my main comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public?
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Carolina Luis, Hillsborough resident for the last nine years. Very happy with the district. I come from a blended family. My husband has two stepkids who I adore, alumni of the Hillsborough High School and all the program, very successful. So, I must say, we are very happy and grateful with the district. That's something I want to do. We also have a three-years-old. And the reason why I'm here is because I am someone who has studied, worked, and lived in three different countries. And I was very surprised when I came to know that in Hillsborough, we don't have a full-time kindergarten. Not only in my country, Colombia, South America, and I can tell for all Latin America, we have full-time kindergarten as a matter of fact. It's something that is not, I think I have never heard of part-time before I had Bennett, my son. And also, I worked sometime ago in the city, in New York, and I came to know that they have this full-time, and also universal pre-K. I have a relative in North Jersey, and my cousin, my second cousin, he's going, or he's, actually, he finished last year, he's going full-time kindergarten. So, my first question to the board today is, I'd like to know if full kindergarten is something that we are envisioning for our kids in Hillsborough, New Jersey, and if this is part of the five-years-plan that I, I was told we are working on, so that would be...
Yeah, please, Dr. Schiff. Thank you. We're in the process of developing our new strategic plan, and it's broken into a few different areas. College and career readiness, student life, and early childhood education. And we're going to be discussing that as an option, full-day K. We'll also be discussing preschool and some other ideas coming out of each of those areas. We're not there yet in terms of saying definitely one way or the other. We have to go through a process of communicating the work. We have three work groups that will be presenting in the fall, their, their work product and presentation to the board and to the public. And then the board will be discussing what further information they need in order to make a well-informed decision moving forward, and, and hopefully, we'll have some decision points about what to, what we're going to research even further, probably during the new year, I would think, around, around that timeframe or so.
Oh, thank you. That's, I didn't understand, this is part of the five-years-plan, or is something parallel that you are running?
Oh, no, it would take, it would take years, because, you know, in order for us to offer full-day kindergarten, we'd have to build, and building schools or additions take time.
Okay. So, these community groups, or these that you mentioned, is there something we can be part of?
We actually had, all of the year before, we had stakeholder groups of community members, even students, parents, teachers, administrators, were all part of, I think, four or five very large conversations, which, which synthesized some of these areas. And now, the work groups are actually moving forward with the process. And I anticipate that as we begin more public conversation about the things that, that will be presented, that there'll be continued opportunities for public comment and discussion.
So, it's not part of the five-years-plan? This is...
Not yet.
No, yeah.
I'm sorry? No, 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 not, not yet, it's being contemplated for our new strategic plan.
That means that someone who is now two, three-years-old will not have full-time kindergarten in Hillsborough, New Jersey?
It's hard for me to predict, I would, I would anticipate probably not.
Yeah, that means the kid will be five in two years, so we will not have that.
Again, probably not. It takes, it takes time to...
Are we exploring options, like having that possibility for families who are able to help somehow? I mean, what worries me is that this, I don't see like this being part of our conversations in the Board of Education, like, this is something that is not new or unprecedented. Most districts are having this. And so, I, first of all, I don't understand very well why we don't have it yet. You said this is space, or it's resources, or it's lack of interest in the community?
Yes, and yes. Those are two very important things. Spaces and resources. And, and you are correct that the majority of schools in the state... And, and you are correct that the majority of schools in the state of New Jersey do have full-day kindergarten. But the board will go through a process of reviewing the research on full-day K versus half-day K, and will, will go through a process of listening to the reports from each of the, of the work groups in the fall, and, and will make an informed decision moving forward.
Okay. So I would like to be part of those groups. Who do I email to in order to be?
Well, we, we don't have, the working groups are already finishing their work, but what I suggest is that you stay involved by either coming to board meetings or watching us on YouTube. You can certainly email your questions or concerns to myself or Dr. Antounas. We'd be happy to, to address that. But most importantly, coming to a public meeting and expressing your thoughts is an important part about, about being part of the process.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was dual immersion, which is something that is not, that's spread out. But certainly, our community is bilingual, trilingual, bilingual. I think Hillsboro is a word town right now. And I would like to know where we are at with dual immersion, more exposure to, you know, bilingualism and only unilanguage education for all kids, not only pre-K or kindergarten.
May I just address?
Sure. Please, Dr. Schiff.
Yeah, we, we, we just started, in fact, this past year with the Seal of Biliteracy, which is a state identification that goes on the, the graduation for students in high school that, that are either going through a second language acquisition, or maybe English wasn't their first language, and they can get the Seal of Biliteracy in both of those areas. So we're, we're very excited about it. We had a good amount of students. Maybe, Dr. Antounas, you can share a little bit of that background. Plus, as part of our prior strategic plan, we revamped a lot of the work that we did in world language, adding Mandarin Chinese and Spanish to the elementary program, and having more time in world language offerings in fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. So for the first time ever in our history, almost 30% of freshmen are taking a Level Three in the language that they chose when they were in fifth grade. So, Dr. Antounas.
So I think you're talking more about an immersion program with, okay. So, right now, we receive a bilingual waiver from the state because we qualify under certain limitations that the state provides to us. You have to have a certain number of students, I want to say 20, in, in one grade level at one school. We currently don't have that. We have over, over 35 languages in the school community and over 65 languages in the Hillsboro township and the community at large. So we are growing in leaps and bounds in that area. I suspect that within the next three to five years, we will no longer receive that waiver, and we will absolutely have to implement an immersion program within the district. We're not there yet.
Okay. So why to wait for the waiver and not start working before getting the waiver, but proactively becoming a bilingual district or trilingual? That would be my, my comment to the district. And certainly to close, I, I really want the board to think about full-time kindergarten. Certainly, there is a new generation of mothers in, in Hillsboro who have a more spread background than 20 years ago. And I expect that my son will have, who is three-years-old, will have a much completed education or more updated education than his brothers who are 29 and 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. So I just wanted to follow up on that, just a question, because I know she had asked about community participation.
Name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anarala Valdevia, Apple Hill Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. So I was part of that, that community involvement plan for, and that was two years ago. So that's where it came out, all the different groups, the high school, the academies, full-day kindergarten, even preschool and languages. And that was two years ago. So I have little ones as well. And so, does this mean it's still going to be presented to the board? There's nothing final? What, what is the timeline like?
Yeah. Just to reiterate, the timeframe is that the work groups, which, which was an evolution out of the stakeholder groups which you participated in, will complete their, their work product, which are three reports, plus presentations to the board as well as the community, this fall. So October, November timeframe. And from there, then the board is going to be making some decisions about what to either get further information on or what they wish to act upon.
So, I'm sorry, but what further information? I thought you mentioned earlier.
They may need exacting costs of certain things. So in order to provide what we're calling an investment-grade audit, the board will make a determination about what, if any, or combination of things they wish to pursue. And at that point, we need to generate the actual, the actual costs. And we'll need professional architects and others in order to come, come together and make sure that whatever those costs are going to be, that they're accurately estimated.
Okay. I see what you're saying. So nobody really has an idea at this point on the costs or rooms or any of those specifics?
Yeah.
I, I'm sure, but.
We'd have to build too, as Dr. Schiff said.
Really? I mean, because there's always room for trailers. I mean, there's a, a lot of options, a lot of creative options.
Yeah.
What was that? I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
I can't imagine people in Hillsboro would be thrilled with trailering.
No, we haven't had that before. And trailers are only temporary, supposed, you know.
Go ahead. It sounded like you wanted to say something.
No, thank you, Dr. Schiff. No. The, the board is going to, Dr. Schiff is correct. The board wants to know the exact costs, personnel that would have to be hired, building, retrofitting. But these are answers that could be easily had.
Right. That's why I was just curious and, and kind of confused as to why it would be such a slow process.
No, it's, well, we're going to, we're going to hear the reports within the next couple of months. Maybe these reports will have a lot of those figures in them. We don't, we can't say that they will yet because I haven't seen it and I don't know what it, I don't know what it's going to look like. So Dr. Schiff is saying that if, if the report that the board receives does not have all of the information that the board wants, then we'll, then it'll take some additional time. I mean, do I have a question? Yeah, exactly. And, and it's, it's highly complicated. So if we choose to build, and one of the ideas that's percolating out there, we build a new high school, then, then are we going to reconfigure existing buildings, sell buildings? What is the cost of transportation? Do we redistrict? I mean, it gets, and it's different than if we move to full-day K or we don't move to full-day K. Then we have certain capacity issues that we would need to present to the board. If we add preschool, half-day, full-day, three, four, all of those things impact on the overall decision-making of the process. So there are a lot of different iterations that, that could be discussed as a part of this. And, and as the board comes to some decisions about what to move forward with, that will guide our, our research into nailing down all of the costs. And it's very simple to have a cost per, per square foot to build a new school. That, that's not, that's not the complicated part of this. The complicated part is how does all of this fit together? And, you know, it's transportation, it's food services, it's, it's looking at how, how the kids are currently configured in the grade levels, selling property, you know, all of those things need to be fully vetted once we have decisions about what we'd like to proceed with.
So it sounds like you're waiting for the presentation on the research that the committees are presenting, right?
Yes.
And then at that point, the board is going to decide if the research provided enough evidence or information for you, whether you're going to move ahead with it?
Yeah.
And possibly place it on the five-year plan? Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, the board will decide what that strategic plan will.
So the board decides? So there are no guarantees for full-day kindergarten to be on the five-year plan? Is that correct?
It'll be considered, but the board will make a decision.
Considered? Considered? So not a definite?
No, there's nothing.
No definite? Okay.
But I don't want to speak for the board.
I see.
No, there's no definite.
Is there anything definite on the five-year plan?
I don't think so, just not. It's a new strategic plan. So we, we, we laid out ideas for the past five years about the things that we were doing and accomplished.
I'm sorry, what was that? I, I see somebody maybe wanting to say something? No?
We, I'm sorry. What, what I, what I was saying is that we had ideas from our prior strategic plan that were fully implemented. But as we make decisions as a board moving forward on what are the initiatives and the things that the work groups will, will present, we'll have clarity on what those items will be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other from the public?
Good evening. Esther Cole from Tatcha Terrace. I'm actually concerned as to when would the collection of resumes for a varsity high school coach for the lacrosse team? And whether now you have any candidates? And how long does this take since our varsity coach resigned?
Yeah, the, the process, and Mr. Volpe, our, our director of HR, may, may be able to answer this in more detail. But it's a spring sport?
It is a spring sport. But I, I heard about the soccer coach, and I know you guys have a soccer coach now, but I mean, all the problems that they had about not having a coach. So I'm wondering whether or not the process for hiring a new varsity lacrosse coach will take the same length of time?
No, we, it, we have a lot more time in terms of placing for the spring coach. When the decision was made in the, in the springtime for soccer, soccer, of course, is a fall.
Yeah, of course. And they have to have the background and the experience to, you know, be able to be a candidate for the position.
But we're, we're very optimistic. We have, we have a much broader timeframe in order to secure the coaches.
Yeah, I figure just bring it up, you know, because my kids, my three boys play lacrosse, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. We'll keep it up. Mine is, I think we have one more? Are we done? Leisha, I think.
She's coming.
Leisha's coming up. I'm sorry, here's our baby.
Leisha Gabor-Balas. I live in Hillsboro. So I have two questions for you. So I've heard that for language, it's offered half-year and half-year for, I guess it's K through third every six-period, K through four?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And then I thought someone said fourth through seventh was something else. So in fifth through seventh, how often is that now?
Yeah, fifth through eight. You'll have to help me. Every other day in five, six, and then, and seven, eight, every, every day.
So, sorry, fifth and?
Fifth and six, every other day.
And seventh and eighth is every day?
Every day.
Okay. Sounds great. Um.
And, and by the way, that's the same language. So the, the children select their language at the end of fourth grade and take the same language for, for four years.
Okay. I guess, are they allowed to switch?
It's rare, very rare.
They would probably have to take extra studies or somehow already know another language, I guess, right?
There are other choices that they have.
Unless there's an extenuating circumstance, the language they choose is the language they remain in until eighth grade, until they get into high school, then they may choose to choose another language.
Okay. And is it in fourth grade that they, they're introduced to maybe like four different languages or something, and then they can try to choose between those or something?
Yes.
There's a program that our, 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 our languages teachers at Otten Road offer to the community for outgoing fourth graders. And they can enroll in any of the, it is free to the community. They can enroll in those classes. Parents sign the students up, and it is all of the language except for Spanish and Chinese because they've already been exposed to those.
Okay. So four more, you just said?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. And then also, I just wanted to make sure if I heard that right. So the full-day kindergarten group, who is doing the, the planning or giving you research, they are also tasked with coming up with a plan of how to do it, if you were to do it, like with the money, and do you divide a classroom, or do you build, or do you do temporary, or they're, that's part of their thing too?
Well, yeah. We, we have a, an early, it's not a full-day kindergarten group, it's an early childhood group.
Sorry.
That, that's working on those type of things. Actually, Dr. Antounas coordinates each one of those groups, and I'll turn it over to her.
Sure. So the subcommittee was tasked with providing the board and the community with as much information as necessary to make an informed decision. Pros and cons for moving forward with any of these things under college and career, under life, student life, or under early childhood. Early childhood includes universal preschool as well as full-day kindergarten. The people on the committees, which is made up of administrators, teachers, every content area across the board, K-12, have gathered for many, many hours and reviewed numerous, numerous hours of research and have offered, have offered opinions, informations, but most especially, we're looking at the most up-to-date research. And then a, a report will be generated from each subcommittee that will be presented, as Dr. Schiff said, in the fall, and with recommendations to move forward.
Right. So a lot of what you just said sounds like it's, should we do this or should we not? But, but they're also looking into the building and, and what would possibly be needed for, to make it happen, not just, should it be happening? Right?
Well, the details of cost will be the next, our next level of work after the board makes some determinations about which they, they would like us to move forward with.
Okay. So it's just the concept first, and then you figure out the money and how to put it into place? That's separate?
Including, there'll be some rough estimates of cost, certainly. But as I said before, they're all interrelated. So until we make some determination about what, what exactly to do, those costs are too rough to, to really draw broad conclusions about. We, we need to narrow that down, have that investment-grade work that's necessary in order to provide the board and the community with accurate information.
I guess I'm just thinking, with my, with my mind, it's, it's also how do you do it to see if the board would be interested in doing it? Because the board could say, oh, we want to do it, but then, oh, it's going to cost too much money, so we just can't. Or, oh, it goes to referendum, and then that gets turned down possibly or something, and then, and then, okay, well, we can't do it, I guess. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public at this time? All right, let's go to, let's go to the action agenda, Dr. Schiff. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, affirm the superintendent Hiv determination as attached, accept the fiscal year 2018 IDEA grant allocation, approve staff members being paid through that allocation, submit the 1718 Statement of Assurance for the District Professional Development Mentoring Plans, to approve the, the Nursing Services Plan, to approve the ESEA Consolidated Subgrant Application, and approve the revised English Language Arts curriculum, social studies curriculum, science curriculum, world language curriculum, textbook and program adoptions, all of which were reported out of the Education Committee, and to approve the curriculum writing as listed, regulations, and board policies for approval for first reading. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Got it. All right, any discussion from board? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinch?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Trheo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schiff. All right, thank you, Dr. Schiff. Good job. Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of human resources that I'm recommending. To approve resignations as listed, revise leaves of absences, contract changes. Yes, contract changes. Approve the transfers and changes of assignment as listed, to approve reappointments, leaves of absences, approve the appointments of co-curricular advisor, affirm the appointments of, and we already did Roberto for our supervisor, also of teachers, long-term substitutes, occupational therapists, speech therapists, school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, secretary, lunch aid, transportation drivers, and coaches. Also approve the substitutes as listed on the attachment. Approve 2017 summer work as listed. Also approve the ESY 2017 program for staff. And approve extra-period coverage for the 1617 school year and to pre-approve extra-period coverage for the 1718 school year. Also to approve extra-period coverage for the upcoming year as well as six-period coverage. Also approve group changes, approve credit recovery hours, and policies and regulation approval for first reading as reported out of committee. Okay. Do I hear a motion for HR?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So Dana. All right, any discussion? We, on 10.8, we already approved the.
Can we separate 10.8 out?
Do it separate? Okay. Let's do it.
10.8, what do we do?
No, only for.
We only did the supervisor.
Only for the supervisor.
We didn't do any, any particular one or just the whole thing?
Uh, the teacher. Uh, hold on. Teachers. No, teachers.
All right. Just 10.8. We'll separate it. Yeah. Okay, I got you. I didn't know if there was any one particular one. All right. Any other, Judy?
Yeah, I just want to make, going forward, I mean, I'm not going to vote no because of this, well, well.
Maybe you should.
But going forward, I would like to see coach resumes. They were not included in today's package. I think it's been brought up many times that, you know, the public is very concerned about who we're hiring in coaching positions, and it would be nice if the board could see those resumes.
Will do. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, so let's do everything except 10.8. Okay? So I'll just say it like that. We'll know what we're doing. All right, you got it, Mahmood? All right, roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinch?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, good. Dr. Schiff, operations. Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly bills lists, monthly financial reports, coordinated transportation agreement, transportation resolution for first student, to approve the resolution to appoint the lessor for a four-year lease purchase agreement as well as a five-year lease purchase agreement, and approve a settlement agreement. Any, oh, yeah. Brett and Jen.
Got it.
All right, any discussion on this, on operations? Questions? Comments? From the floor?
The one question that came up about the etching. Is that going to change anything with 11.5?
No. No. Because I don't, etching's not part of the lease.
I think that was a separate thing last time. I really do.
That's a separate cost?
I don't think so. Student, these are student chromebooks.
I don't think we did student chromebooks.
Exactly. We left last time.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Good catch, Brett.
We actually discussed.
Oh, gee, got it?
When I was on last time.
Gee. I'll probably you are, Siri now.
Yeah.
Speaking through Brett there. All right.
All right, we're good.
All right, so good. So without, any other comment, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinch?
Upstate.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. Comments from the public under old business? This is your second shot about something that we forgot. Okay? From the, from the board, old business or other business that you've, that I neglected to talk about, that you really.
Other businesses.